Your call. You even set a date?
I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion to Mr. Weaver.
Notify the mayor.
Yeah, notify the mayor.
Okay.
And he'd like this on the agenda.
Okay. Second. May I second it? And clerk, go ahead.
There are several people experienced in the field with federal regulations and state regulations, and they would really like to have a workshop for the limousine ordinances written. Is that possible?
I had discussed that with the clerk also, and I'm not at all opposed to that. But I would like to get just a little better handle on where I'm at with my knowledge before we would do that. So if you would also keep that in mind, that I may ask for a workshop, and of course, it would be if anyone that was interested. But we would want the council to be aware of that before that occurred. So we may very well sometime in January want to, or even the end of December, although I would hate to set it on Christmas Day. I'd like to probably let everyone know, and let the press know, that we may want to have a workshop when I get a little better handle, because right now, I don't know that a workshop would be real beneficial, because my thoughts are still very unorganized on that part. But if anyone else has anything they want to send me, I'll be glad to look at anything anyone wants to send me. And I got, I think, probably will have two or three inches by the time we're through with it. But I've got some of my old stuff, and I think the clerk has quite a bit, too.
Do you have the motion in second to postpone till February? Or till I'm notified? We'll take out February. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number three is proceeding for appointing commission vacancies. Motion to discuss.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Discussion's open.
Well, as we spoke about this issue during our last episode, we found that, as it stands now, city code says that the mayor shall nominate applicants for the planning, or, excuse me, the HDC and the Planning Commission. State code, state statute does not say that that is necessary. It does say that the mayor shall appoint with the city council's approval. What I'm hoping to get accomplished is a procedure in which applications go to the city clerk, or even the city receptionist, it doesn't matter to me. So one of these entities would receive the applications, and then everybody, the mayor and all the city council members, would receive all of the applications. Then, if the mayor or any city council member chose to nominate any of these applicants, they could, at that point, nominate any applicant that they should choose to nominate. Then, city council could vote on it, and of course, the mayor could also vote to break a tie. And then the mayor could proceed with appointing. So it actually doesn't take anything away from the mayor, because the mayor can still have a vote on it, the mayor can still nominate, the mayor still appoints. It would, it would open up the bottleneck for having only one person, that being the mayor, being the only one to say who may be nominated and who may not be nominated. So that is what I'm hoping to get accomplished with this.
Further? Mr. DeVito.
Well, I'm not sure there's a bottleneck. So that's a speculative call as to, you know, unfortunately, I know all too well that there's not a great rush of people to serve the community, and that's unfortunate, and we're all held responsible for that. So basically, I reject the premise that there is a bottleneck, and there's this big wealth of people, you know, clamoring at the mayor's door to serve the community. I wish that were the truth. So I really don't see why we need to change the structure of government in regards to appointments, so. And might I ask the city attorney?
Yes.
Are there all commissions subject to the mayor's appointment per state law, or certain commissions?
The actual wording varies, but I would caution council, I think splitting hairs over appointing and nominating is two different, being two different terms, because I don't think that, I think they're used pretty much simultaneously. And so I'm not sure the council would have the power to do what is being suggested.
Mr. Pana?
I had a concern some time ago, and it relates, in a way, to this. Two applicants applying for a commission, and I finally, and this was before I was sitting at this table and was sitting on planning, got a call from an applicant that they were concerned why their application hadn't been considered. So I finally went in and talked to the mayor. And I think if there was some way, and both were valid, I don't want to say excuse, valid reasons for not considering nominating that person, and in one case, one of them was nominated for a different commission than what they had applied for due to the concern that the mayor had at the time. I think if reasons could be, not necessarily reasons, somehow knowing, I guess the only way to put it is, either in the application process, that the applicants be encouraged to notify council that they're putting in a application to volunteer for a commission, which we can't force anybody to do. I don't have a problem with the way the current system works, as long as the people are being fairly treated. And if there's a problem with individuals in particular commissions, then taking and maybe looking at suggesting that they apply for another commission. As Mr. DeVito said, you know, we've got a lot of vacancies, but I'm sure your in-basket is not overflowing with applications. And putting these people who say that they have a desire to serve the city, and maybe another position versus just letting it fester to the point that it's he said, she said, I don't want, he wants, this type of thing, and be able to get the people that are willing to serve somewhere, but somehow letting council know that there are people attempting to put their names in the pot. I don't know if this could be a matter of course, or I don't like seeing us try to change more laws and requirements, but, because it's, the only one that I've ever seen a problem with in the past has been the CAPC, where they've come up with their own nominee and thought that they had the approval, and it still had to come to council. But I'd just like to see it be able to do a little bit more awareness on the part of the people that are applying, and letting us know, hey, I put my application in for such and such position, and go from there, and if we don't hear anything on it, then we start asking the questions that we can ask.
Ms. Balance, go ahead.
Well, to address Mr. DeVito's comments, I am aware that there have been more than one, less than a dozen, people who have turned in applications that were never brought to the table, they were never nominated for our consideration at all. I also corresponded with Mr. Schoen regarding this matter, and on Monday, October 3rd, I received the answer from Mr. Schoen regarding this matter, and I quote, "Please note that the state statute does not require that the mayor nominate planning commissioners. It is within the power of the council to amend its ordinance." So it's not a requirement, it's not a state requirement, that only the mayor gets to nominate. I would like to see us all have the opportunity to nominate qualified individuals. Thank you.
Further? Yes, ma'am.
I move to instruct the city attorney to change our ordinances, our enabling ordinances for the Planning Commission and the HDC to allow nominations at large from the mayor and any member of the city council.
Just those two commissions?
Those two are the ones we are allowed to do that with.
Okay.
Further?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Balance, I'll call for the second, not you. Okay. You can't call for a second. I have to do that. Otherwise, you're sitting in this chair. Okay?
Then if anybody else ever asks for that, I expect you to give them the same reply.
You got it.
Thank you.
We'll work on it. All right. Now, there is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that three on this side? I guess that's three ayes and three nays.
I haven't heard the nay count.
Yeah, natural nays, yeah.
Okay. Usually, you just do, yeah, okay. All of them not in favor?
No.
No.
Okay. So it's three and three. No, can't vote that way, but just to let you know, I can't vote that way. It's kind of awkward, I can't vote no, but if I don't say anything, then that means no, so why not just say no, right?
Because you can't.
Well, it fails.
Yeah, exactly.
It automatically fails.
Yes.
Since you said that was under this item, correct?
Yes.
Going based on the webpage, the city webpage, just for clarification and concern, Planning Commission has a position that expires one January, Ms. Flirde, or however you pronounce her last name, I believe.
Denise.
CAPC, the two council positions expire at the end of this month. Do we need to do anything on that before this meeting's over, or do we wait till January? And also, position three, Mr. Ridwell's position expired June 30th. Whether there's been another application, or is he just sitting de facto?
He's still sitting.
Okay. So he's just going to sit with an expired?
Till he resigns or is removed.
Okay. Parks has...
That's my understanding of how it works.
Resigns or replaced?
Parks has, position five, according to the webpage, says it expires 5/111. And HDC has two positions at one...
5/111?
5/111.
5/114 says here.
I just rolled it forward, because that's gone.
Well, it can't be until somebody's sitting there, because that is the way we got screwed up a long time ago on the terms for Planning Commission. So it has to remain the same until somebody's in that position.
So you would prefer that it say expired 5/1?
And the HDC has position four and five, one expired November 30th of 10, and one expired November 30th, 11. And the other thing is, I've had people ask me, why are some of the commissions, do they have phone numbers, and some of them don't? And the one answer I got was, some people don't want their numbers given out, that's fine, but I think it's kind of be like us saying, well, I don't want my phone number or my email address given out, because I don't want anybody to call me. I'd like to see some consistency across the board versus just somebody's opinion that, no, we aren't going to put phone numbers on the... I believe Planning Commission has and always has had phone numbers, and even in some cases, email addresses, where you could email the people. But we do have technically eight positions that are available for people to apply for, and I highly encourage people to do it, and be open to maybe a secondary position instead of a primary.
To clarify that point for Ms. Balance, while I go, about seating positions, how does that work? If they're not removed, or they resign, do they keep their seat?
Until they're removed, resigned, or replaced.
Removed by the commission, or me.
Or replaced.
Okay.
By virtue of a new person being appointed into the spot.
Right. Yes, Mr. Beer?
In answer to Mr. Pana's question, the application does nominate a secondary, if they're interested in another commission on that application, and it's their option to fill that out if they want to. I think regarding the CAPC, probably Mr. Maloney, being new, has not realized that he needs to bring Mr. Birdwell back up to the commission for their approval. He has since decided that he would like to stay on the CAPC commission.
That's my understanding of it. Okay. Talk to Mike tomorrow then. Any further? All right. Next on the agenda is number four, handicap parking regulations. Fairly...
Move to discuss. Second.
In November, I came and I gave y'all copies of what the Planning Commission has proposed to you. I'd just like to tell you that if you want to look in your state code, it's 27, 15, 305, and 306. Most everything that we proposed to you came from state code.
Number again, please.
27, 15, 305, and 306. What I have listed for you, like, is what our code says now, and what we are proposing. On October the 25th, the Planning Commission did vote five to one to send this to you. I wanted to let you know that on number E, in the enforcement section of it, Chief Hyatt asked me to put these words in specifically. It says, "Any law enforcement or parking enforcement official," that's just for our town, because there's a difference. We have parking enforcement, and we have law enforcement, and the people that write tickets can't enforce some of the laws unless it specifically says that. But I also wanted to let you know that the Planning Commission first had this on our agenda on June 28th, that's when we started. We've had a lot of meetings about this, we've had a lot of discussion, we've talked with the PD, we've talked with the actual people that write tickets, and this comes to you not just to jack up the fines and make the fines higher, this comes to you to deter able-bodied citizens from parking in the few handicap parking spaces that we have available in our town. And it would be my hope that you would make a motion to send this to your city attorney to be put in ordinance form.
Any questions for? If no, thank you.
Mr. DeVito? I would make a motion to send the request from the Planning Commission regarding handicap parking to the city attorney to draft an ordinance.
Second.
May I second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Six to zero.
Yes, for now.
All opposed?
Put your UVS.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Number five, a setting date for workshop to review or rewrite animal drone vehicle requirements. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Beer, I missed DeVito, sorry.
What is the, excuse me for losing my thoughts on this, but is the, is it coming up for renewal, the franchise agreements, or was this a workshop regarding reviewing?
Apparently, this is, from my understanding, it's a workshop to redo the whole ordinance.
Okay.
Doc?
We have several workshops coming up here this month, and prior, part of January, too. Is there any way to postpone this, say, February? We have some workshops we have to have.
Yeah, we have to have some budget workshops. Yes, sir.
I move we postpone this workshop till the first meeting in February, then decide we're going to have it.
Is it second?
I'll second that.
Okay. May I second to postpone the first meeting in February? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
First Monday in February. I'm sorry, first Thursday.
Second.
We said third, first meeting.
Next on the agenda is discussion for petition for right to regulate on Arkansas highways in the city limits. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
May I second it? Discussion, floor is open. Mr. DeVito.
Could I direct a question to the city attorney?
Yes.
Is there, does council have the ability to, in essence, regulate on state highways?
My understanding from speaking with the Highway Commission, and from everything I've seen, and of course, there's been lots of things written that I think are fully half-truths and truths, but no. At this point, they vigorously say they will defend their right to regulate what goes on on their highways, because they are mandated by state law to regulate highways in an even manner. We can ask them, which is my understanding of what is being said here, to give us the right to do something. But I would suspect that they will probably tell us no, but that's, at this point, they control. And if there is a request, my understanding from them is they would review that and give us an answer. But there'd have to be a request, and it would have to be specific to what we want to do, to have any chance of being granted. They're just not going to turn the highways over to us.
Ms. Donald?
I'm sorry, I can't lay my hands on the paperwork right now, but I surely...
Mr. Tharp, you can't be talking to the council member, sir.
I can't lay my hands on the paperwork right now, but I could certainly bring it to the next meeting to share with the council. Paperwork to the effect from the Attorney General that we cannot regulate traffic on the state highways. But we certainly may regulate business within the city limits, even if it is on the state highways. So to me, that says, we can regulate business in the city, even if it's on the state highways. So if we could postpone this to next meeting, I'd be happy to bring that information to share, because it does say that while we cannot regulate traffic, pretty much anybody can use the state highway until it comes to doing business on the state highway within city limits. Then we certainly may regulate business within the city limits, even if it's on a state highway.
I don't disagree with what your premise is, as far as that we can regulate business within the city, but we cannot pass an ordinance that says semi-trailer trucks cannot use that road out there, and that is business that's a state highway. So I think you're splitting the hair too thinly for what it really means when the Attorney General's opinion says the one line that you're quoting.
I also found an Attorney General's opinion that outlined, there was, I can't tell you the name of the city right now, but as I said, if we want to postpone this, I will bring the paperwork to show you exactly what I found. And it did, there was a city that had a part of a state highway that was, they didn't want business traffic on that state highway. So they indeed, they indeed did pass an ordinance that semi-trucks could not use this certain highway within the city limits. There was another route that semis could take, and so the city was allowed to regulate commerce on that particular state highway, because it was in the city limits, and the city didn't want semi-traffic on that road. Again, as I said, if we could postpone this to the next meeting, I'd be happy to share with you that information.
Mr. Beer?
I talked with Mr. Vogel, along with several other people, and the mayor, too. I think he basically says the same thing what our city attorney's saying, we cannot stop people from using the highway. We can if it becomes a traffic hazard, and if there's 18 horse and buggies, stagecoaches with 20 horses in front of it, and piled up behind each other, we can call the state highway department to help, and see if there's a traffic hazard. And at that point, they would be able to help us.
They would come and do a study.
They would come and do the study.
From Mr. Vogel, as I did talk to him, I could promise Tom would. He said if it becomes a safety issue, then they would, needs to be referred to the state police.
Yes. That they also regulate?
Yes.
Traffic.
Yes. Mr. DeVito?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it goes on, and I think what Ms. Balance is saying, instead of bringing that information to us, if you could just email it instead, so we'd have advanced reading of it, that's what our franchise is doing. We're regulating business. So I don't see, actually, I think what we're trying to do is saying that you cannot use the state highway for horse and buggies, and we can't do that.
No, but we can say you can't use the state highway for horse and buggy commerce. I know, I know that you don't want to take my word for it, and I understand that. But again, I'd be happy to look up that information and share it with everybody, so we could know.
Mr. DeVito?
I don't see any problem in delaying this until the next meeting, and I'd move that we move this issue to our January meeting.
Second.
Well, she's already made...
I think she already had a motion to postpone.
Oh, did she get a second, too?
I don't think we got to the second.
No second.
All right. May I second to postpone until, I want to make sure the date. Next January meeting, first meeting in January? Ms. Balance?
January.
First meeting? Okay. postpone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number seven is discussion of ordinance for group tour franchise.
Move to discuss. Second.
Okay, may I second it? Discussion's open, floor is open. We have Mr. Gummels here, and we also have Mr. Varner here.
My first question to the table is, is the only reason this is coming up at this point in time is because for some reason there was written into the ordinance an expiration date of the ordinance itself, or is that termination date of the franchise agreements?
I think it's dated the 21st of December. That was the expiration date for...
The ordinance?
Yes, sir.
The ordinance has expired.
Apparently this one had a...
No, it has a date in it, but I didn't know if it was...
I don't have the ordinance here right now. So wait a minute, maybe I do have, yeah, I do have. Mr. River, I'll let you run this one. Let you go pioneer.
It is my understanding that the ordinance that created the last regulation we have of the group tour franchises, when it was written was done with our current, our, that time current transit director and a couple of the franchise holders and it does appear that the ordinance in the manner it was written basically sunset itself here in a couple of weeks. Whether that was the intent or whether they simply wanted to have the franchises have to be renewed at that point, the wording leaves it open to the interpretation that the entire structure goes away in about three weeks.
Or you could read it, the rights privileges and authority granted expires December 21st.
You could read it either way.
Stop.
Based on that, the safer thing to do would be to pass a new group tour franchise ordinance without a termination date for it, but giving a term of one year, two years, three years, however long the council feels is appropriate.